John Johannes Meyer.
So I, I was at the other meeting, you probably saw me back there, and, and I have some real concerns with Stronger Together. Um, I don't know if you know, but the, the lieutenant district, our lieutenant governor's office shut them, shut their pick down because they were doing illegal things. And that you were invited, you're inviting them here to speak to you because they came back as another group, Stronger Together Community. Same people, everything's the same. Probably not a good group to be hanging with. And to, to fathom that somebody could be donating and then inviting them into the city to share this kind of propaganda they're spreading is false. Okay? Let's really research who these people are. Let's talk to lieutenant governor, find out what they're doing, okay? It just seems to me also that, it's funny that, have any of you ever talked to somebody and they maybe disagreed with you about something? And then all of a sudden you found out they're from a different city and you said, "I don't need to talk to you. You're from a different city." And yet, what do we do, what do you do is you invite somebody in from a different city to come speak to you? That to me sounds like a total hypocrite, that you'd invite other people in to talk. And you were singing their praises, like, "This is the best thing since sliced bread." We don't have a vote! And why don't we have a vote? It's not because the legislator, it's because you did nothing to join an inter-local agreement. Okay? I'd love to talk to you afterwards, let's discuss it and I will be more than happy to find out.
Couldn't be more wrong.
Okay, let's discuss it afterwards. But there were multiple times that I understand you were encouraged to say, "Join the local agreement, find out, join it just in case." Okay? And instead, I know having, going to a split is not what this council wants. Okay? That's pretty obvious based on the last meeting. Your four, well, I mean, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
I think it was nine percent wanted it.
Okay, alrighty. So anyways, um, it's scary to think that we don't have a vote. That vote was taken from us. And whether it's the legislator, and maybe it is, I'd love to find more information on it. I believe facts over fiction or fantasy. So love to find out more facts if you have that for us. I, I hope that this city does not try to pass propaganda and spread a group, spread information about this group to other people. They will say, "Let's stick to Pleasant Grove and worry about our city and what our city needs more than anything else. We need the community involvement and stuff. We need to have a vote on these issues that I think are really important to our children." That's what I'm mostly concerned about, is our children having a good place to go to school. Alpine School District has raised taxes six out of six years. They just passed another tax increase. It's killing us! I can't do that! The county had a meeting about raising taxes that I was at. That's gonna be another 15%. We are being hammered as citizens. Thank you.
I'm representing, I, I just received this statement to represent a number of people who are of the same thought process. Um, so there are some important points that need to be made about the group presenting today. Uh, they have been and continue to be opposed to any kind of division of Alpine School District at any cost. Any survey or polling results that they present should not be taken at face value. Obviously, I have concerns about the methodology on that. The leaders of the two picks formed by Stronger Together all reside in Orem, and many of them are linked to Alpine School District and have a strong interest in preserving the status quo. They do not live in Pleasant Grove and they don't live in any of the cities that will be voting on the reconfiguration of Alpine School District. Not one of the officers of these picks will be able to vote on the matter, yet they are, you know, working to accomplish their agenda. With that said, there are many benefits to our community by allowing some divisions of Alpine School District, be it into two or to three. Pleasant Grove High School needs to be rebuilt and partnering with, you know, other cities on the side of the lake would be welcome. Pleasant Grove recently had the difficult school closure of Valley View Elementary, and there could be more school closures in the side of the area in the future. If we want to make sure our voices are being heard, then a smaller district could give Pleasant Grove more representation in the future. Staying with Linden can also ensure that the many Linden students that attend Pleasant Grove High School and the Pleasant Grove students who attend Oak Canyon Junior High can be, continue to do so. And also that it, we can ensure that our tax dollars will go to paying for, you know, the local classrooms and services that we need and want, instead of raising our taxes to pay for buildings on the other side of the lake. Alpine School District has become a bit large and cumbersome and division is inevitable. Failure to divide now will have the following consequences down the road: more overcrowded schools, more school closures and consolidations on the east side, more taxes being raised by the school board rather than having the less costly general obligation bonds, and more division and distrust between the school board members and various sides of the districts. So, uh, we suggest that the best way to go forward is to allow Alpine School District to be divided at least into two, if not three. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our open session and bring it back up to the council and move to our item number six this evening. It's our consent items, which include the city council minutes for our July 23rd, 2024 meeting and our city council minutes, minutes for August 6th, 2024 meeting. And B, to consider for approval payment number one for Acme Construction Incorporated for the Pleasant Grove Strong Grain Outfall Project, or Pipe to the Lake, as we call it. And C, to consider for approval payment number two to Got Dirt Construction LLC for the 1160 North Utilities and Roadway Improvement Project. And D, to consider for approval payment number 11 to Staker Parsons Materials and Construction, a CRH company, for the 2600 North Roadway Improvement Project. And E, to consider for approval payment request for August the 8th, 2024. And ask for a motion.
May I make a motion that we approve the consent items as read?
We have a motion from council member Anderson.
Second.
Second. Second from council member Jensen. Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to our, uh, because we have no board or commissioner committee appointments this evening or presentations, and we'll move to nine, our public hearing items, which we have one of this evening, and it's 9A, a public hearing to consider for adoption and in ordinance 2024 dash zero two zero to apply them. The Grove Business Park overlay to approximately 4.86 acres on property currently zoned, the Grove Commercial Sales Sub-District located approximately 29 South, 2000 West. An applicant is J.C. Smoot. And we'll turn the time over to Director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to be here in front of you guys today, as usual. So, um, as mayor mentioned, this is a legislative decision with a public hearing at all, because the proposal is, is a proposal for a rezone. Okay? The applicant, J.C. Smoot, is proposing to rezon 4.86 acres, which is right here is the acreage, and is the parcel right here in blue. So he's proposing to rezon 4.86 acres from the Commercial Sales Sub-District to the, um, to the GVP, the Grove Business Park overlay. So why is this a rezon if it's an overlay? Okay? So a, a zone, a zone, or a color, and I'm actually gonna jump to a different, to a different map, just to help us a little bit. We're talking about this property right there. I'm gonna zoom out a little bit, okay? A little bit more, so we can see different colors. Actually, it's kinda hard to see different colors, but there you go. So a zone, a zone usually when we, a, a zone dictates or regulates different requirements, different uses, yeah, different design standards, different architectural standards. Okay? So as I mentioned right now, and it's not very visible in this map, but I'm gonna try to zoom in as much as possible. For example, you guys can see a difference between these two, these two areas right here. So what we have right here, right now, in the Grove Commercial Sales, uh, the rules that apply to this, uh, parcel are the same rules that apply to the parcels all along, uh, the, uh, North County Boulevard, with the exception of this area right here, as we can see, that's a different color. It's hard to distinguish it on this map, but it's a different color. Again, uh, when we apply an overlay, or when we apply a top, and actually, uh, this map, we can see the different overlays. As you guys can see right here, there's some like, uh, these are overlays right here. These yellow ones are overlays. When we apply an overlay, so new regulations apply to the parcel, new rules apply to the parcel, new uses apply to the parcel. That's why it's considered a rezon, okay? Whether we completely eliminate the, the underlying zone and put another one, or we just put another one on top, it's still a rezon, okay? That's the reason why it's coming for you guys, and that's why it's called a rezon. Um, sometime ago, so a couple months ago, about, I think it was March, April, the applicant approached staff, uh, with, with a proposal, with a, with a project to develop this parcel right here. Again, uh, the property owner is Philip Blake, but the applicant is J.C. Smoot, so they come out with a proposal to develop that. What they're proposing is to do, what's the most popular, the word of the, I mean, for the last three years, we have heard the word flex space a lot. Okay? Flex space, what's flex space? Uh, I think flex space is just a, a word for very flexible on the type of use that we're gonna do, where allows storage in, where allows a little bit of manufacturing, where allows, um, um, and a mix of uses in the same, in the same building, if we can say it like that. Okay? So as the applicant approached and, and expressed their, their desire to develop the property into flex space, the staff unfortunately comes out with the news that flex space are not permitted in the, in the Grove Sales Sub-District. Okay? They're not permitted. Um, we do have, we do have a mechanism or a, a way that we have allowed that flex space by applying the overlay to rezon the area, okay? What are the difference? I think that a good question is, what are the difference between the existing zone right now, and what are the difference between the rules that apply right now versus the rules that could be applied if we put this overlay on top of it? Okay? For example, right now, as the, uh, Commercial Sales Sub-District is a, as our call said, it's, uh, is for the highest quality architecture and site designs, and is, it asks for office uses, professional uses, retail uses, hotel uses, civic uses, public, public, uh, public uses. Those are permitted right now in the zone. It's not just retail. It's not just that we, it's not just, if it's not retail, you're out. Now, there's a, a variety, there's a many multiple uses that can currently be applied or, or be developed into, as right now. It's not that the zone requires only retail. It, it, it opens up to multiple uses, okay? What's the difference, uh, once we apply the Grove Business Park or the GVP, the difference is that now we're gonna allow, um, for example, if a building comes to us right now, or, or a project comes to us and say, "Hey, I'm gonna do a building, every retail needs, um, storage in, or warehousing." But then we start looking into it, okay? What's the most prominent use? Okay? In the Commercial Sales Sub-District, as it is right now, the most prominent use have to be the retail, and you can have a little bit of, of warehousing, okay? When we do the GVP, or if we do, as the applicant is proposing, then it's the opposite. The majority of the building can be storage in, can be warehousing, can be manufacturing, and you can have a little bit of retail. That's, that's, that's at the end of the proposal. Uh, the Grove Business Park, for example, because of the nature, because it allows for light manufacturing, it gives you, allows you to do, go to a building of 100 feet tall, 100. The current one, 65 only. So there's even different architectural standards, there's different designs. Uh, when you do a building in the, in the Grove Sales, we're gonna require something like, like the main offices for the Terra, okay? That's, that's a good example. When we do the GVP, then we can allow a building, which is on the south corner of the Terra, the big building, that, that, cause that one has the warehousing, that one has the light manufacturing, so that's the difference. Okay? We all understand that this rezon proposal is a legislative decision, so that's why it's, you went through the planning commission, and it's right here in front of you guys. Uh, the whole request boils down to, what do we want to have as a city? Do we want to have office and retail side, or are we open to do flex space multi-tenant building? Okay? It boils down to that. Um, the recommendation from staff, when we talked to the applicant, has been a recommendation of denial. Okay? And the reasons why is the, the way staff sees it is like, number one, um, we understand the need for flex space. Everybody wants flex space right now, okay? But we as a city, we have taken the opportunity to zone certain parts of the city, and everything right here, for example, everything in the BMP, we went and say, "Hey, we're gonna designate that for it." Okay? Um, so we have allowed, and we have a huge, large amount of development that has approached the city and that have been developed right now in the BMP. That's why the name is Business Manufacturing Park. Okay? So we have designated. It's not that the city has not designated. However, I think that we have very limited space in the Grove. As we're building out, we have very limited space. There's a concept that is important to mention, um, the idea of, and probably I'm gonna be very practical on this, uh, but the easiest parcels haven't already been developed in Pleasant Grove City.
Say that sentence again.
The easiest parcels, the easiest, easiest, uh, for developers have been already, uh, already occupied, okay? We are living with the, the hardest, and, and as, as time passes, they're gonna be more difficult, more difficult, and more difficult, of course, because they're the ones with no frontage, are the ones that are a little bit hidden, are the ones that are not, they haven't been developed for a reason. Okay? And it's the idea of a staff, and it's the idea of the general plan to preserve the few open land that we have in the Grove for commercial, uh, sorry, for retail and office uses. Have we used, or why do we have that overlay then? The reason why we have that overlay has been to incentivize retail. So we have applied that overlay. Here's an example. The Terra, these are the, this is the Terra campus, right here. And the Terra needed a place, needed a place where they can do a little bit of manufacturing. They have a huge building right here. Actually, let's take a look at this. Cause this is right here, okay? So we applied that overlay, and it's not very visible on this map, but we applied that overlay because we want, we want to have a little bit, we want to have retail, and as business approaches and tells, "Hey, but how about, I need a little bit of, uh, light manufacturing," then we work something with them. So we've been flexible in that. We have been using this overlay, kind of to like incentivize that. Similar situation happened with the other area where we applied the, the GB, the GVP right here. As we know, we have a, a big retail business right here, and then we say, "Okay, well, the back portion, it can be, can be developed into something else, a little bit of light manufacturing." Okay? So have we used it? Yes, but I think we've used it as a tool, again, to incentivize retail. Kinda like a, a, a deal where we go like, "Okay, like if you bring a retail to the city on a portion of land, and you're gonna do the best building that you can with the highest architectural standards, then we can work something with you, and then we can do a little bit of light manufacturing." Okay? In this case, that's not the situation, okay? They're trying to, uh, uh, rezon the entire area into the GVP. So that's why staff, uh, recommended denial. One of the reasons why. A second reason why is because we have, next to that parcel, right behind, from all the way right here to right here, we have residential uses. Okay? We have residential uses. One thing, one thing, or one, one scenario is when there's already a zone applied, or there's already a light manufacturing use, and then residential comes. When they, when, when the people, the, the residents called me to complain about a nuisance, first thing I said, "Well, they were there first." It's a different scenario when the residential is there and then we allow for a light manufacturing in the place. Completely different scenario.
While you're on that area, where's the proposed hotel going? Where, is it, I'm going there.
Oh, sorry. No, no worries. I'm going there. So, that's another reason, okay? Uh, have we applied again the overlay? Yes, we have. We have a situation right here, when we do it right here, but there's a little bit of a buffer. We have a church right here, a huge church right here, and this is the building where we apply the, the, the light manufacturing. In the case of the opposite, I mean, in the, this one right here, we have Tesla, and the, uh, the overlay that we apply right here, there's a, uh, there's a big street right there in the middle. In this case, there's no buffer whatsoever. There is wetlands, but wetlands can be mitigated, or there can be switch, or there's, there's some work can, can, that it can be done. However, again, the concept of how staff sees it is, it's a different scenario when residential encroaches or comes after a light manufacturing versus when we bring light manufacturing next to a residential, okay? The narrative is different when we have to talk to the, to the residents and the staff has to explain to them why there's certain nuisances in the place. As I mentioned at the beginning, uh, we're gonna face, and I, I should say like, let's, let's buckle up, because a lot of the proposals are gonna come from now in the future, as we are developing, uh, the Grove, we're gonna start facing the difficult parcels, okay? This parcel right here, that is just north of it, this one you guys can see right here, just, this is the one that is proposed to be rezoned. This is the residential. And this one right here, okay? It's a similar parcel, it's a similar parcel. Let's take a look at this one, I think it will be clearer. It's a similar parcel from here to right here, that the only frontage is right here, but there's already a building right here, there's a bank. So all of this is right there without no frontage. There's only access through easement. Is it difficult to develop? Yes, it's, it's been very difficult. Has it been many years there? Yes, actually, there was a, a project that was approved that didn't happen, but right now, for example, we have an application, we're working with somebody right there to come up with a hotel. Okay? We're in the, like, in the third, in the third review, and we're working hard to come out, uh, to, to work something else. So, is it difficult?
And that's on that north piece?
Yes, just on the neighborhood.
Would the, would the egress come off 300 North?
No, from State Street. From State Street, and...
Behind the bank, or by the side of the bank?
Yeah. So, there's another easement that goes through the Boulevard. But again, what I'm, what I'm trying to explain with this is, is not in detriment of the, of the current applicant, but what I'm saying is that, is it difficult? Yes. We understand how difficult it is. Is it possible? The answer is also yes. Okay? So there has been opportunities for it. Like I say, we have limited space, and at least is the, the purpose of staff or the objective of staff, to preserve that to the maximum. Site plant, as, as an applicant always brings a site plant and says, "Well, it's gonna be a beautiful building." Unfortunately, I, I do believe, I do believe developers when they do that. However, uh, ex, uh, experience have taught us otherwise, right? When we are gonna rezon, I hope we have in mind the possible uses that can come. Once we have rezoned a property, we, we, we're, we cannot go back and say, "Well, but we don't like this building." But, but the applicant can change. The applicant can change. Usually, when an applicant has a use, a specific use for a parcel, they will come and say, "I would like to do a COTEX amendment to add the use that I'm thinking into the zone." When they don't know, like in the previous experiences that we have had, when we don't know what could happen in the future, cause even they don't know what could happen in the future, they would like to do a rezon to keep the options open for a multi-tenant. I, I understand the situation for them, because they don't know what tenants they're gonna have. Probably they'll make, they'll do a building with five, six, three units, and they don't know who's gonna come. So that's why they like to do a rezon, so they can have, uh, they can leave the possibilities open for multi-tenants, okay? For, for different tenants. This item, uh, as, as I'm saying, is a, is a legislative decision. So this item went through the planning commission. The planning commission took a look at this, uh, in a public hearing as well. The recommendation from the planning commission was, uh, a recommendation of denial as well. The vote was four to two. Four to two, and the reason why there was four people voting against it, what, or, to send a recommendation of denial, is because the planning commission considers that a development can happen on it within the, the, the current regulations. Okay? So they understand also that it's difficult, they understand that it's hard, but they understand that it's possible, so they wanna preserve that land in the current zone. I think, uh, the general plan also encourages to preserve the vision and to preserve the objectives that we have for the zone, and, um, that's why the planning commission sent that recommendation. That's what I have, uh, mayor and council. I'm open for questions, but also I think the applicant is here, they would like to, uh, they brought their own computer, they would like to plug it, show you some pictures, and, uh, but from staff, that's it.
Any further questions for Daniel?
Just my, just the road. The road that was, you know, in the master plan?
Yes.
That's the question I have.
So, right now, um, the applicant went through something called DRC or, uh, Development Review Committee, which is the pre-application meeting. So we have had public works, engineering, working with this. We are requiring the completion of the road right here, okay? We are requiring that. That's part of a site plan, that doesn't have to do much with the rezon, okay? At the time of the site plan, we, we're working actually actively right now with any applicant that has showed up to, 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 to the city with different proposals. Um, the, the city engineer has decided that if a traffic study can be shown where this road can just be built all the way to right here and then do a turn, a temporary turnaround, then it's a possibility. I mean, we haven't said for sure, we just, we exploring possibilities, but it is the position of the staff that the road needs to be completed. If we take a look actually, um, we have made big efforts, even when, uh, this property was developed right here, the McKay Christiansen, we, we required, that was one of the biggest requirements that we did, because we want the connectivity to go right here and connect to right here with American Fork. American Fork also, actually, this is an old map, so let me show you a, a new map, and that's why I have it right here. They're also making an effort to connect this road with right here. Okay? As they're developing, they're gonna connect the road. It's, is, uh, as I was looking at this, for example, and again, this is, I think we're deviating a little bit for the reason, but just for kicks and giggles, someone explained this. If someone is coming on the freeway and wants to go to all this development, residential development that we have, it will be easier for them to go right here on 500 and approach it this way, okay? Rather than already congested interchange that we have right there. So it is important for staff to have that connection, the connectivity right there.
So Daniel, let me just make sure that I understand fully on the vote. If, if we voted against the planning commission and voted to approve this, um, we're not necessarily approving the road that goes through, what, what is that property on the, on the, is that Smith property, right? How could we require the road to go through?
Um, a the site plan approval. We're working on it. So, a the site plant or the plat, cause this property, in order to develop this property, we need to have a plat first, okay? Because they wanna keep the south portion as residential and the north portion as commercial. I think that's, that's at least a, a concept that they propose. We're gonna plat the property at the time of the, of, uh, record, at the time of the subdivisions, all right? We're gonna need to see where the easement, where the location of that road is gonna go. And also, as the time, as a building comes right there, here in the north, regardless of the zone, we need to make sure that there's connectivity, that we, that the roads right there can handle the traffic. And that will, will be required. That's not a legislative decision, that's an administrative decision. If the traffic requires it, it has to go right there. We'll make sure that it, that it goes right there. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I want that, I, we need that road to go through. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Hundred percent.
I'm not sure I wanna put, you know, mixed use right there on the end of a residential property.
I mean...
That's, that's what you're asking us to approve.
Yeah, mixed use, or any use, staff is looking forward and is pushing forward to get that road.
Is it across the street? Is that where Osman's developing the retail, kinda or just down just a little bit?
The Osmonds are a little south, but there's also another developer here, they're next to each other. So all of this is, is a retail, commercial use right there.
My question is, COTEX, sorry, code, there wasn't a COTEX asked for, or what, what use or uses are they specifically looking for? The problem I have is that if we approve this, then we're opening up can of worms, per se, and that meant, meant that way, but we're opening it up to all these options that could be there. And what they could, I'm not putting this on them, but we've seen it in other areas where they, we approve something like this and then it gets turned around and sold, right? And then it's wide open for any uses, and that's what scares me here.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asked about the hotel, the road. Why not ask for just one use, you know? Why ask for the wide range of, of this? What use?
Yes. So, again, if the applicant had one use in mind, the best route to go is not a rezon. The best route to go is a CO... The best route to go is a co-text amendment, cause they have one use that they wanna do. In this case, there's not. They they wanna have an open of possibilities to come up with any use that is light manufacturing on a big list of light manufacturing uses.
So what is the, what is the use that they're asking for?
Well, there right here, they can explain to them, I think it's a building they wanna do for some medical and and stuff like that. But again, that's just one use, but they wanna leave it open, cause to multiple possibilities. If it was just one use and we can ask them exactly what it is, that's would be a co-text amendment, simple as that. Again, they're asking for a rezone because they wanna leave it open to, as far as I understood, they wanna leave it open to multiple light manufacturing uses, so not just one.
It just scares me is this is our, part of our Grove Zone, right? One, we get one chance, again, we talked about this. I think some of us have been here longer that, you know, went through a lot of, lot of the discussions and pros and cons, what do we want this area to look like? And then for me, for me, just to just stick at light industrial, whatever uses right to have smack by the neighborhood and that is, I think we're asking for trouble.
So the question I have, because I wasn't here for all those discussions, in your, in the time that you've been here, what kind of interest has been shown in that lot?
Multiple, multiple. I think I gotta, I gotta give some, you say, hands, hands up to the hands up, like, I I recognize the efforts that the applicant, the real estate agent has done, he's brought up multiple uses. I think the ones that I remember recently, the one before this was, for example, a hockey, a hockey practice field.
Okay, well, I'm in on that. So that's approved.
That's, that's the most recent one that I, that I, that I...
They went someplace else.
Daniel, has there been residential requests too for that area?
As far as I remember, no.
So the biggest problem with this piece of land...
At least during my time, no.
Okay.
So Steve, the biggest problem with this piece of land is that it's, it's not, it's hard to access, so that's why there hasn't been a close.
Correct, and and that's why I brought that example of the property north right here, because, I mean, if we think about this parcel, this parcel, this extremely hard to access while zero visibility, however...
And that one's not even, there's no access even to that one from, like, we can't access that piece of property that we're talking about right now from State Street. The only access is...
Yeah, this will be the frontage. The frontage will be to right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we need this road to go through, because this road right here...
And we're not talking about the road right now. That, that's a given.
But that's, that's what I'm saying, at least it has direct access from a public street. This one right here does not have any access to a public street.
Wouldn't it have access to the 300 north, Daniel?
This one right here?
Mm-hmm.
To 300 nor right, no, this one doesn't.
You gotta go across.
Yeah, north, just north of...
Gotta go across the Smith property.
Yeah.
No, 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 that one right there, so, and I don't have a pointer, but...
I'm not trying to compare properties, what I'm trying to show is that it's possible to develop.
All right, the other, the other question I had, I just wanna clarify something you said, which was, that's, it's not an administrative decision as to whether or not that road is required to go through? It's based on, it is an administrative decision based on a traffic study that's going to be conducted?
Correct, correct, correct. It's not like, it's not like the city council can waive the requirement like that, no. I mean, if it's required based on, on, on the traffic that is gonna be created, then then it has to be right there. It's already established by the code.
Any other questions, Council?
Public hearing.
Yeah, Council Williams, there's not a public road right here, this road doesn't continue right there, just stops right here.
It doesn't?
No, it doesn't.
I think it does. North of, north of the...
These, these are, these are easements. These are not public roads, as you can see, public, yeah, these, these are, there's are just easements.
It's kind of the parking lot to the Walmart you're talking about?
Yeah, it's not a public road, it's an easement.
Is it a public easement or is it, is it a public easement or a private easement?
It's a private easement.
So they could, they could fence it off theoretically?
Yeah, but I mean, there's an easement that they allow these guys to access it through, but it's not a public road, is what I'm saying.
When Walmart came in, they wanted the easement as part of the deal, really to get access to their store. So that, that's why that easement was initially put in and even as it went a little further to the west. For that to eventually connect in, into North County Boulevard, I don't know what the options are.
But that, but that's not an easement that inures to the benefit of the public, the two private individuals could decide to change.
It was a benefit there, it was a benefit to the grocery store.
If you look at the map, you click on that one, that one's a street and you can see who the owner is and this is a public street right here, you're not gonna see something like that.
That makes sense, great, perfect, thanks, Daniel.
Anytime.
Thanks, Daniel.
My pleasure, Mayor.
And so before we open our public hearing, I'd like to give the opportunity to a representative from J.C. Smoot to come forward if they would like and speak to the Council.
Nope, it's not, is it not on?
It's gonna be light up.
There you go.
Thank you, appreciate it. First like to just thank...
Would you state your name?
My name's Matthew Smoot, I'm J.C.'s brother.
Thank you.
First like to thank Daniel for that presentation. Before diving into my presentation, first like to ask if you have any, any questions for me? Okay, great. I'd like, do you have any concerns, any concerns that you'd like to just talk about, just out of the chute and...
Well, I'll ask what I asked Daniel, why not a co-text amendment? Why, why the full overlay? I mean, is there a particular one or two uses or are you wanting the whole, the whole gamut? That was my question.
You bet it. So we, we have a partner who is interested in moving his business here, Sam Steele, and he has a nutritional supplement business. He doesn't manufacture the nutritional supplements, but he does package them and sell them online. So it'd be for his office and and for, you know, that flex space to be able to to have an online business. It's 4.86 acres, but if you net out the wetlands and we have a 90-foot right-of-way that goes all the way through the property, then we're, we're really sitting at 3.2 acres. And so it's a, it is quite a bit smaller, but it's still large enough that we need a multi-tenant building, you know, to to make it work. Part of what, when, when we went into our, our meeting with the planning commission, they were asking us about the buffer, so I'd like to address this buffer. This is, there's 110 feet at the, kind of the smallest point that we could find between the front door of the apartments and townhomes. This is to the east of our property and that gets it, gets us past this natural buffer, the, the wetlands, which is a grove of trees, it's a, it's a, it's called a year-round slow. So there's ponds in different areas. It's not a wetlands you could ever remove, cause it's, it's year-round water, so there's no mitigation that could ever happen there. Daniel spoke about these two flex buildings. This property is right next to the Tesla and this, this is an approved business park overlay. It's a similar square footage, 110 feet from building to to door. I will point out that there is a setback on our property from the wetlands, so we actually have more of a setback, more of a, of a buffer. And, and I haven't heard of there being any, you know, any complaints or issues about nuisances here with this business park overlay. This is a photograph of, this is next door looking at our property. As you can see, this wetlands is heavily wooded, very thick grove of trees and it's not going anywhere. It's always will be there. It's an excellent natural buffer and it's better than a streetscape in terms of buffering. These are other properties, these are not AI-generated, these are real. You're looking at our property, you cannot see it in your next door. And so again, it's, it's, it's an excellent buffer and, and so we, we think that it's something that's gonna, gonna work well there long-term. Going back to, just wanted to make a few comparisons, looking at the, the other business park overlays. And going back to this business park overlay, we think that you, you should consider that there were, they had 11 acres, almost 11 acres, this, this developer. And part of that acreage had, the, the Tesla piece had frontage on I-15. And when you look at what's next to them, that's also fronting I-15, you have Bisha's, RV, and then you also have BMW. I mean, there's a reason why those are, are located where they are, they have frontage. We don't have any frontage.
Have you thought about buying the frontage in front of that, that property and putting retail there?
So we have, we were quoted a price that was just too high.
Okay.
And, and again, when we're, when you're, when you're only dealing with really, when you net out and really make it an apples-to-apples comparison, that we're at 3.2 acres, then there's like multi-use on 3.2 acres is magnitudes different than multi-use on 11 acres, if that makes sense. Like, it's, it's, it's difficult to say, okay, let's allocate a hotel on, you know, two and a half acres and then the other half acre, let's do our, you know, let's, let's do flex, if that, if that makes sense. One reason why I believe the developer was asking for flex space in this location is that, of course, traffic counts aren't all that high, it's not in our territorial road right there. Similarly, when 100 South is completely pushed through, our traffic counts are, are gonna be pretty low. I think they projected 5,000 to 7,000 cars per day. And just, you...